I'm going to be stepping out at about 1:45 PM, so I'll be passing the gavel over to Councilmember Burnett. Madam Labor Commissioner, Mr. Director, I think you guys both have a couple of slides, maybe one slide and two.
Couple of slides.
Okay. Okay, great. Even more efficient. We can jump right to questions. So what I'm going to do is, I'm going to start with the Director of DHR, ask you to introduce your team. We all know Lindsey, of course, but if you can introduce your team, first and last names, and what their position title is. Have you run through your deck? Then I'm going to turn to the Labor Commissioner. Madam Labor Commissioner, going to have you do the same, introduce senior members of your team that are here with us this afternoon testifying, including their first and last name and position title. Have you run through your slide deck? And then we'll jump right into questions from the council. Sound good?
Sounds good.
Mr. Director, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, distinguished committee members. My name is Quentin Herbert. I serve as the Director of Human Resources and Chief Human Capital Officer. With me is Lindsey Wines, who is our Dynamic Assistant Deputy Director of Administration. Through strategic partnerships and collaborations, DHR ensures human resources, policies, procedures, and systems are properly aligned with the city's aim to be an employer of choice. By attracting, developing, and retaining a high-performing and diverse workforce, DHR guides city agencies to foster a healthy, safe, and productive work environment for employees, their families, and the community. We accomplish this through eight strategic offices: the Office of Classification and Compensation, Policy and Compliance, Learning and Development, Employee Benefits, Recruitment and Shared Services, EAP, HRIS, and the newly-formed Office of Engagement and Strategic Partnerships. Our two overarching goals for fiscal year '24 are to strengthen employee engagement, which is why the Office of Engagement and Strategic Partnerships was created, and then to strive to enhance the employee experience at each stage of the employee lifecycle. In short, we want to have a more human-centric approach to our employees. Again, next slide just shows our four service areas, and we'll go into them in detail. The first is Service Number 770, which is Administration. The Administration Office is responsible for overall agency oversight and performance management, fiscal oversight, employment policy development and implementation, employee law and regulatory compliance, HRIS operations, strategic engagement and communication, as well as the Civil Service Commission is housed in this service as well, which we work with them on agency administration and rulemaking. Of note for fiscal year 2024, the recommended budget includes $172,537 for leadership development and employee recognition programs for city employees. This includes the Certified Public Manager Program that we administer in partnership with the University of Baltimore. Also, it transfers a position from the Department of Finance to DHR to support Workday for human resources and labor-related items that have a payroll impact. And it also includes an internal transfer of an Employee Benefits Assistant position from Service 771. Service 771 is the Employee Benefits Service, and this service is responsible for administering the city's health and welfare benefits for all active employees, retirees, and their dependents according to the terms and conditions of the city's contracts covering medical plans, dental plans, life insurance plans, prescription drug policies, vision, flexible spending accounts, and our unemployment insurance. This service also administers the citywide health and wellness program, and EAP is also housed in this service. Of note for fiscal year '24, this recommended budget initially transfers two positions out of this service to elsewhere in the agency to better reflect where those people work and where that service is provided. It also transfers a portion of costs associated with administering the city's health benefit to the Health Reserve Account. Service 772 is Civil Service Management, and this service is comprised of the Offices of Classification and Compensation and Shared Services and Recruitment. Class and Comp is responsible for classifying occupational groups, developing job classification specifications, establishing compensation levels for the positions that comprise our workforce, and we do that by conducting position, organization, and compensation studies. Within the Office of Shared Services and Recruitment, the Shared Services Team provides HR guidance and support to the city agencies to ensure consistency and fairness with city policies and employee programs. The recruitment team standardizes the administrative lifecycle for position requisitions and candidate selection criteria. Of note for fiscal year '24, the recommended budget eliminates funding for a Neo-Gov contract as the recruitment platform transitioned in fiscal year 2023 to Workday. The recommended budget also includes $13,651 for class and comp studies and $12,000 for a virtual career platform that will allow us to better attract candidates for our various vacancies. Service 773 is Learning and Development, and Learning and Development incorporates the continuing education and training standards for our employees. This service provides training, leadership development, other professional development to our employees. This office provides learning paths that enable targeted learning for IT and software management, management and supervision, leadership development, training around city policies, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and others through in-classroom and virtual learning environments. We're very proud of the leadership pathway that was launched in fiscal year '23, which is a comprehensive training comprised of three multi-step paths. Each path includes theoretical leadership foundations through self-paced online learning and practical application through instructor-facilitated session. Of note for fiscal year '24, the recommended budget includes $28,105 for additional virtual licenses for citywide employee learning and development. This will allow everyone across the city to take advantage of the trainings that are provided through Skill Path, which is our vendor for virtual learning services. As of right now, we have a certain number of licenses, and once we reach that amount, we're limited in what employees can take that training. And with that, I will defer to my colleague, Madam Labor Commissioner.
Oh, oh, you're just passing. Sorry, I thought you were passing the mic. I apologize. We've been joined by Council Vice President Sharon Green-Milton, Sixth District Member of the Committee; Councilman John Bullock, Ninth District; Councilman Ryan Dorsey, Third District Member of the Committee; Councilwoman Odette Ramos, Fourteenth District; Madam Labor Commissioner, floor is yours.
You mean, you didn't hear all of that brilliance? I'll start over. Okay, thank you. All right. I apologize. I didn't know. All right, I'm going to say those famous words. Can you hear me now? Can everyone hear me? Okay, thank you so much. So I'll start again. Good afternoon. I am Deborah Moore Carter, the Labor Commissioner for the City of Baltimore. Joining me today is my Deputy Labor Commissioner Veronica Jones and my Director of Labor and Employee Relations, Evette Brown. So now let me tell you a little bit about the Office of the Labor Commissioner and our mission. The Office of the Labor Commissioner works in partnership with managers and supervisors, union leadership and their membership, and employees to promote effective labor relations in the workplace. Our core values of continuous improvement, teamwork, and achieving results are woven into every aspect of labor relations management. We are a strategic partner of the Mayor's Office and through our labor relations activities supports the Mayor's initiatives. And our primary goals, not all of them, but these are the two major goals for FY '24, is to start and complete negotiations timely within the fiscal year timeframes and to work collaboratively with the Department of Human Resources to create a grievance training program for agency directors, managers, and supervisors. The Office of the Labor Commissioner, right now we are six employees strong, and we have two vacancies for labor relations specialists, which we will be filling. And our service number is 128, and the description is, this service conducts labor relations contract negotiations with eight unions and meet and confer with MAPS, the Managerial and Professional Society of Baltimore. We negotiate the collective bargaining agreements. We oversee the administration of the Memorandum of Understanding. We review and make recommendations for labor and management policies and procedures, and we also oversee the city's apprenticeship program. And our level of service, our funding, remains the same. And that's it. Thank you.
So, thank you for that. And any questions from any council members? Council Vice President, Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you.
And then Councilwoman Odette.
Thank you, Mr. Co-Chair. I just want to thank you all for, you know, the work that you do in helping to educate our city employees and keeping them informed. And as you know, apprenticeships are very important, and I think that that's been a growing trend with all of the agencies, and I thank you for being a part of that. I know that your office, you know, works with the main apprenticeship program that I think is still going strong with water and wastewater. With the recent retirement of Ask Me Leadership, I'm sure you're continuing to work with those unions to help keep things moving smoothly. So just wanted to, you know, we don't say thank you enough, and I just want to say thank you to all of you that continue to do a good job for the city.
Thank you very much. We are continuing the legacy of the recently retired Mr. Glenn Middleton.
Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Really, I'm just here because Quentin lives in my district. Anybody going to think I'm a bad representative if I don't show up for things like this? But really, look, the only thing that comes to mind, you know, Lindsey and Quentin fixed a thing for me that was a longstanding problem. We finally have a good implementation of the requirements and the ethics law posting in every job listing to say whether or not financial disclosure is going to be required. Very happy to get that squared away. Thank you both. The only thing that comes up kind of perennially related to hiring is always the, we need a crossing guard at this school, and why can't we just hire people who live in the neighborhood? Because it's so impossibly impractical to have people coming from like across town to some location for an hour in the morning and then going back across town and having a life or whatever, and then having to come back across town to some other location for an hour in the afternoon. It's just like impossibly impractical for so many people and wonderfully practical for probably plenty of people who live in the immediate surrounding neighborhoods. And it just, it comes up, we're going to have DOT in here after you guys, and it comes up every single year. How can we hire people? And how can we seek people out in the immediate surrounding communities around schools that need crossing guards?
Thank you for the question, Councilman, and we remain willing to work with the agencies. One of the things that comes to mind that might work would be community recruitment. We have worked with some of our partners, Reckon Parks and with MOED, to have targeted recruitment events in community. That may be something that we can work with the school system and with our partners in DOT to target recruitment events at those particular schools, to try to market to those who live in those communities and advise them of the opportunities that are available to them. One of the difficulties that I foresee with that type of approach, however, is that when we create a list of certified eligible candidates, that list that's sent to the agency has all of the people who are qualified eligibles for that position. We now have the ability, however, with Workday, to search them out by ZIP code to provide a list in that immediate community for agencies to consider. I guess the short answer to your question is that's going to require some more thought and some partnership with our other agencies to determine how we can do a better job of offering those opportunities to people in the community that live near those schools.
Generally, yes. That's what I would think. I don't think that DOT is really engaging in that, and so whatever support DHR can give to them to bolster their ability to do that, like...
Can I add something to that?
Yes, please.
So crossing guards are represented by the City Union of Baltimore Cub, and we actually met about them yesterday. So the Department of Transportation does try to assign crossing guards to neighborhood schools. One of the things that we're excited about that we'd like to talk about now is having a campaign, now that the school year is coming to an end, having a campaign, because the difficulty with crossing guards is that a lot of the parents don't listen to them and they don't obey the traffic laws, and we had a tragedy recently as a result of that. So we are working with the Department of Transportation and the union to address that. And also, the union was very helpful in providing names of people who would like to be crossing guards to help fill the vacancies.
I'm glad to hear that there's some work being done on this. I'll say, also, if it's anything like anything else at DOT, they're not planning it out in advance. They're not doing the work when it needs to be done so that it's prepared and ready on time. I mean, case in point, we're like halfway through our paving season, and they only yesterday told me which projects are actually planned to be paved this season. I have a high level of doubt that they're actually trying to figure out where we're going to get crossing guards until two weeks or three weeks into the school year, when we're getting complaints that we don't have crossing guards at the neighborhood schools in the locations where we need them. So, you know, whatever we can do to be ahead of the game to make sure that we're seeking people out from communities in advance of the school year, that's what, you know, I'd love to see done. The other thing that occurs to me, and, you know, DOT, they just happen to have an immense level of turnover of positions, and, you know, they're not going to say it outright, but plenty of other people will be. It's because people aren't given the support that they need to do the job, and in being, and in not being given the support, they are not being provided the job opportunity that they were initially offered. I also just learned about Reckon Parks. Reckon Parks is now, you know, we've fought for a long time to have trail managers, and we hired two just within the last year, and both have now quit because instead of being trail managers, they were basically being treated like the trail maintenance people when their job is to go out and manage and understand the trail conditions and then report back to Reckon Parks' maintenance people to actually go and perform the maintenance. Basically, instead, they were told, here are the tools, go do the maintenance yourself. That's not the job that they were hired to do, and it would seem to me that when there is so much of a process that has to be undertaken in order to hire anybody for anything in this city, that when we have turnover because the people who come into jobs are asked to do something other than what they were hired to do, and then they leave, I mean, we've now lost every bicycle planner that we've hired since I've been on the city council and the one that was here when I joined the council, because none of them has ever been given the support that they need to do their job properly. We continue to have just immense turnover in these critical positions, particularly at DOT, and again, and again, and again, is because they're being asked to do something other than the job that they were hired to do. Where does, where is, and these are non-Cub positions generally.
Okay.
Where does DHR step into this or have a place in this to say, this is not the job? You can't ask this person to do this because that's not what they were hired to do. We put forth a listing to hire somebody to do a particular job. We have to give them the resources so that they're actually doing that job.
Thank you for the question, Councilman. The short answer to that is, DHR does not have the authority to manage how managers manage their subordinates. That said, I want to use this as an opportunity to highlight something that we've done in DHR. We scrolled away existing resources to create a new office, the Office of Engagement and Strategic Partnerships. One of the things that that office will be working to do in this fiscal year will be to do a pulse or engagement survey, some people call it a pulse survey, of all of our agencies, operational agencies across city government. That forum to identify where employees are disengaged will allow us to be able to have really frank discussions with agencies around what the feedback that we're receiving from their employees. I think it's a number of issues. The issue that you described where a person is asked to perform duties and responsibilities that may not be within their respective class spec, but I think that it's also making sure that our employees have opportunities for development, training, so that they can perform the full penalty of the duties that are in that class spec. And just, so, you know, we are looking into this very intently. We've looked at data that lets us know that when employees spend time learning on the job, where they're learning how to do the things that are required of them in new and innovative ways, 47% of those employees are less likely to report being stressed on their job. 39% of them are more likely to feel productive and successful, and 23% of them feel more comfortable to take on even additional responsibilities. So I think that, to your point, part of it is understanding why our employees feel disengaged and having those discussions with agencies about how we can provide more learning opportunities, how we can look at what we're asking our employees to do, and engage our employees across the enterprise.
I think, that's great to hear. I think that part of the problem also isn't just like the advancement, it's like, I was hired to be in a position where I was going to be given two or three people to actually support the work that I need to manage, and then the department never moves forward and hires anybody else for me to manage to do the work that my office, my little division, my little section is actually supposed to do. We have lost two, I mean, every single bike planner that the city has had in all of the six and a half years that I've been on this council has left to go and do the work that they were hired to do here, they're doing it somewhere else. And they were willing to do it here for probably less pay than they're making at those other places, but they were not supported in doing the job that they were actually hired to do and never, and all left for better opportunity, only frustrated by basically never being given the staff that they were supposed to be supervising. So they're hired into these positions and not given the people below them support like that when the positions exist too. So I'm glad to hear, I hope that this means that there's really a deep dive into talking to those employees and reporting back to the agency, this is what we're seeing as the problem in your agency. But I'd like to know that there is enough of an opportunity for frank, candid discussion with a level of assuredness for security, right? I mean, I know these things second and third hand because DOT people are willing to talk to people outside of government who then I have to go to because they're afraid to speak up about why it's toxic and unproductive and sucks to continue working here.
And let me say this to you, Councilmen. When we talk about engagement, I'm not proposing to do anything with another agency that we haven't already done in-house. So we've done pulse surveys internally, and we had an over an 80% response rate each time that we surveyed our staff. They were very willing to share openly what issues were, what things have improved, what things still need work, and it has shaped for me to have those discussions with our senior leadership team about areas where we are doing well and we need to continue to do well, and quite frankly, areas where we need to get better. Those are the types of decisions that I think this level of analysis across the enterprise will allow leaders to have with their senior teams across the enterprise that we just, quite frankly, don't have line of sight to right now. This also will centralize that information in one place. Employees may not feel as comfortable talking to their agency person because they don't know if that information indeed will be confidential. In this instance, where we are, as DHR, are conducting the pulse surveys and maintaining the data, any information that's reported out is completely disaggregated, so there's no way to identify any employee who responded to the survey. I think that that level of information sharing and partnership will help to address many of the issues that you discussed, which are triggers for disengagement where employees feel that their voice is not heard. I think that that's what I'm hearing in the scenario that you described, that employees were told one thing, it was something else, I'm quite sure that there were, you know, that they expressed that concern, and they felt that it went on deaf ears. This gives us line of sight to those areas within the agency where there is disengagement, and we can partner with the agencies to increase the levels of engagement among our employees.
I appreciate all of this. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Hi, Director Herbert. I have a quick question related to Service Number 770, the $172,000 for leadership development and employee recognition. Can you explain, can you explain or provide a narrative of what that funding would go towards? Is that going to be additional certification for your mid-level staff? Is that going to be for conferences for staff members to go to? Can you explain that a little bit?
Sure. It's not for DHR.
Oh, it's not?
That $150,000, $150,000 of that funds our Certified Public Manager Program that we administer in partnership with the University of Baltimore.
Okay.
Our first cohort of 15 people leaders matriculated through the program, the graduation actually is tomorrow, and I'll be attending the graduation tomorrow. The next cohort of 15 is scheduled to go through in the fall. So this is open to all people leaders across the city.
Okay.
We have funding, the $150,000 funds 30 students per year.
Okay.
So there are two semesters. We send 15 each semester.
Okay.
The remainder of that funding will fund the employee recognition program, the enterprise-wide employee recognition program, for many years, and quite frankly, too many years in my opinion. The only source of employee recognition that was celebrated across the city where it was all agencies participated was the Ladensky Award. Last year, we facilitated the first enterprise-wide employee recognition program where we honored not only an employee of the year, but a supervisor of the year, an executive of the year, and a team of the year. And so the remainder of that money will be to continue that employee engagement program. And so the remainder of that money will be to, to continue that employee engagement program.
Nice. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. But that brings me to a larger concern about the training and professional development budget within DHR. Is that centrally within DHR or is that within each agency? For train, for training and professional development? So I'm talking about conferences, certifications, the different things of that. Because if we're, I'm sorry, sir.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, if.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
No worries. Because if we're, you know, one of the things that I've been kind of pulsing on is making sure that we provide some sort of pipeline from entry to mid to executive level vacancies within each agency. And I want to make sure that if I'm, you know, if I'm asking that of the agency, that it's properly being funded within each agency or centralized within DHR.
Thank you for the question. Our leadership development training is available to all employees. That there once was a time where there would be a back charge to the agency. We were able to, two years ago, get funding in our budget to offer that training across the enterprise. So we had that leadership development that I spoke about earlier, that skill path that is available to all people leaders, all employees. There's also a myriad of other training, free training that is offered to our employees as well. Aside from that, that some agencies do have line items for professional development, which could be development outside of what we offer in our Office of Learning and Development. There are some agencies that have the ability to send their employees for a certification with some of the national accrediting firms. Like, for example, there are some agencies that have in their budget to, to send folks to get their SHRM certification, for example. Every agency doesn't have that as a line item. So there, there still is some level of, um, some access issues for some employees if they're in an agency that does not have that as a line item. But we offer, uh, learning and development, uh, for employees irrespective of whether it's in an agency budget or not.
And I appreciate that response. And I, I viewed, I was on the website and I viewed the learning and development modules that you all have available. But what I am talking about is professional accreditations, project management certifications, different certifications based on industry that would have an additional cost to employees. And, you know, I know we're doing the certified, the CAPM, um, the CAPM with University of Baltimore. But I'm wondering if there can be a standardized approach throughout all agencies so that all agencies have some sort of training and learning development for their mid-level and executive level, um, they, executive level, um, professionals.
And thank you, thank you for that question. And again, um, with respect to those professional certifications, that is a question of what's in that agency's budget.
But, but I'm saying for, for you to take a lead on that. If we are to, if we're, we're to have that learning and development that is centralized within DHR, I'm wondering if there can be a coordinated approach from your agency to ensure that we do have some sort of training, learning development that is a, um, budget line item that is, you know, adequately funded and that is coordinated from DHR, given that you all have that human resource and human capital mission.
Yes, and that's something that we will gladly work with our partners, uh, both in BBMR and throughout the agencies to discuss. But again, um, it's my understanding that one agency head per charter doesn't have the ability to, to say to another agency head, this is how you spend your learning and development money that's in your, in your budget.
Yeah.
So that, that's where we run into the issue. But it's something that we will, uh, take a note and we will commit to work with BBMR and our agency, uh, partners to, to look at.
Thank you. And, and I'm aware, yeah, I'm aware of that notification in the charter about how agency heads cannot tell other agency heads. But the mayor, being the chief executive officer, has a directive to guide all of its agency heads. And I'm wondering if that can be some sort of communication with the administration that is spearheaded from your office, given the mission. And I think that's really important as we're talking about, um, professionalizing and making sure that our city workforce is competitive. We are offering the best and brightest competitiveness to bring people here to the city. And so I, I, I think that should be discussed. Mr. Chair, if I can get a list of agencies that have, um, those training and learning development, um, line items in their budget and the actual amount, I think that would help me a lot as well.
So is that a request?
That's a formal request, yes. Yes, and so I would like to know which agencies have the training and learning development line items in their budget? And also the amount. And then my second question actually has to do with the classification and compensation that D, DHR, I believe it is. Is it DHR? Yeah, DHR. I see that there is a, uh, let's see, let me go to the actual service number. I believe it is, oh, here we go. Service number seven seven two, it says the recommended budget includes thirteen thousand for class and comp studies. When was the last class and comp, comp studies done?
We had a host of them that we went through. The most recent was approximately three months ago where we concluded the, the study of Water and Wastewater Bureau top-down, uh, study where we had a vendor that completed that study. That, those funds are for studies that, that we will bring in a vendor to complete. Uh, where DHR Office of Class and Comp may not have the capacity to complete the study. That's why that amount, it's a pretty de minimis amount.
Okay.
That's why.
Okay. Because that was going to be my next question. It was a pretty nominal amount. I find that, and we've talked about this, I believe other council members have brought this up, about the classification system just throughout the city. It's not as competitive as it needs to be with surrounding jurisdictions. And so I'm wondering those classifications, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm, I'm wondering those classification studies, um, how functional are they? Where they are in the process of being implemented in the current, in the current classification system? I know you mentioned one agency. Are they happening one agency at a time? Or what's that approach that the vendor usually executes?
Okay, right now, we are in the midst of a study that it will, that should be completed by the end of the summer where we are looking at, uh, the remaining hundred and fifty or hundred and sixty classifications, uh, non-public safety classifications across, uh, city government. The reason that we looked at the Water and Wastewater Bureau separately was because the Water and Wastewater Bureau had a separate funding stream. And so the ability to implement the study was, it was easier to implement the study because they could fund it. This study is one, again, that we anticipate being completed by the end of summer. But just because we complete a study, there's a difference between a study completion and a study implementation. And so we would need to, we will be socializing those results with the administration at the end of summer, early fall. What we discovered is something that we, we've known all along, that even though our salaries may be competitive at the start of career, very soon after that, we fall out of competitiveness. Particularly with our AFSMI and Cub positions. What I will say is that by and large, for our MAPS-level positions, the city is very competitive. For those who would say that the city does not pay well, if they're in a MAPS-level position, I would challenge that and push back on that.
What's the percentage of MAP level positions throughout our, our city workforce?
About three thousand of our current positions of, of the thirteen thousand are, are MAPS positions, I would venture to say.
So that's three thousand out of the thirteen thousand, out of the thirteen thousand total city workforce?
What was that?
That's three thousand out of the entire, entire workforce, which is thirteen thousand?
Correct.
Okay, so that's, and my math may be, my math is going to be wrong. But that doesn't seem like a, that doesn't seem like a large amount.
Well, you also have to keep in mind, in that thirteen thousand, you also have police and fire, which is a different, which is a different calculus.
Okay. And how many of that is within the thirteen thousand? So we have the three thousand MAP employees, we have the total thirteen thousand. How many of that is police and fire? Okay, if you can get those numbers. So the, the reason why I'm asking and I'm looking, I'm just evaluating the percentages of like, if we're saying that our MAP level positions are competitive, there seems to be a large percentage that is not competitive.
Right, well, we, we know that our, our AFSMI and Cub positions, I know that Cub is approximately three thousand members. And AFSMI is.
It's a little less than two thousand.
It's a little less than two thousand.
So that's about like five thousand?
Around five thousand.
Okay.
We know that those two bargaining units in particular, we fall out of competitiveness after the hiring step. So, uh, one bargaining unit has four steps. They have hiring, uh, full performance, experienced, senior, and then the other has three steps. So by the time you reach that second step.
You've clearly maxed out.
You're not maxed out, but you're out of competition.
Close to it, yeah. You're close to it.
And then you have, then there are longevities after you meet, meet those steps. So at five years, at ten years, at certain intervals, there are longevities.
And so when was the, when was the last time that a classification study that you just mentioned was executed? Because you, you mentioned, well, implemented, I'll use that term.
We implemented a study in twenty twenty.
In which agency was that in twenty twenty?
There were AFSMI. Over eighty percent of the bargaining unit was studied. There were, there were, um, increases to, uh, most notably, the CDL classes to the solid waste worker classes. There were some others that were, that were, uh, where there were increases. Also that, uh, we did a study of the nurses. We did a study of those who were in local twenty-two oh-two. We've done a study of a number of Cub positions.
Okay.
And the last of which would have been in twenty twenty-two for Cub.
Okay. Okay, perfect. Are those studies publicly available or available to the council?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chair, if I can get a formal request, I'd like all of the classification and comp studies within the last five years, okay?
Uh, Ms. Sophia, you have that also? Okay.
And then I have a few other questions for, um, the Labor Commissioner, once I come back to the next round of questions. Thank you so much, Director Herbert.
Okay, I just want to follow up with my colleague. We, we have a lot of positions in the city that get a, a lot of, um, raises. And I always think about our lowest-paid employees, always the last ones. They kind of get a raise, it's like they stuck. And I know that the unions have a lot to do with it. But why are we not making sure, one, our CDL workers and any persons under that are not getting the kind of raises that they deserve? Two is, I had a, I had a, um, a conversation with an employee and said, he is a, um, mechanical sweeper. He got declassified to a CDL-one and got a pay cut because he was reclassified as CDL-one. I'm hoping that's not true, but he was real upset that they put him in a CDL-one. They reclassified him and he got a pay cut. I hope that's not happening because they should be getting pay raises. Is that true or can you investigate and find out why is it down that the mechanical sweepers go from a reclassification to a CDL-one? And because they went to a CDL-one, they have a pay cut?
I can tell you that, um, initially in twenty twenty, when we did the study and we looked at the scope of work, every CDL is not created equally. There, we look at the type of equipment and apparatus that employees operate. Initially, the mechanical street sweeper was graded as a CDL-one. That position was reclassified to be commensurate with a CDL-two, which means that they received increases, not decreases. When we did the, uh, the, the look at the CDL drivers, the average CDL driver in the city of Baltimore before COLA saw an eleven percent increase to salary as a result of that study. We were, we got very, we're very close to the market rate for commercial drivers license holders nationally. The problem that we have is, any other employer, we are not only competing with the public sector for CDL drivers, the private sector is, is scooping up a lot of the CDL drivers and the private sector is able to compensate at a level that many public sector employers can't match. Which is why we worked in March to, uh, implement the ten thousand dollar hiring and retention bonus. And I can report that from January first of twenty twenty-three to May thirty-first, we saw a twenty-two percent reduction in the number of vacancies in our CDL classes across the enterprise, which tells us that the incentive is working, that we are reducing the number of open vacant positions in all of those CDL classes across the enterprise.
So you give them a ten thousand dollar bonus. But I think we can do better with our city employees, the lowest, lowest-paid city employees. And I think we should be working a little harder for them also. Because if you gave them a ten thousand dollar bonus, when they get to the second step, what happens? It's the same thing you was talking to Councilwoman Porter about. It get lost. So we need to find out why that happens and need to work on that part. Because giving a person a ten thousand dollar bonus and then after the second step, which you just said, Mr. Director, you can't compete. Well, why are we not making sure we can compete and put the money in there so we can keep our workers? I talk to them all the time. They frustrated. You give them a ten thousand dollar bonus and then they get lagged behind anyway. So you give them a ten thousand dollar bonus, they stay there for a little while. I don't know what's attached to the ten thousand, say you got to stay there a year, six months. They're going to be gone again. So now you're going to repeat again having open positions because we have not worked hard enough for our lowest-paid city employees in here like we give everybody else a raise in this city. They deserve better than what they're getting. It's always to me, it's like an excuse, we can't do it. It's the unions, it's the labor. Why we can't be in the same room and make sure our lowest-paid employees get the same kind of effort that we give everybody else in this city when they get a, a bigger raise? I just don't understand why we're not putting that same energy in there for them.
And, and Councilman, and I, I agree that I think that compensation is, is one of the things that we always look at. However, um, when we look at the CDL classification per the Department of Labor Statistics, the average salary of a CDL driver is around fifty-four thousand and some change. The average salary for our CDL-two in the city of Baltimore is fifty-three thousand nine nineteen. The average salary for a CDL-one, uh, is, is fifty thousand seventy-two dollars. So we are close to the market average with this particular classification. And the ten thousand dollar hiring or retention bonus actually puts us over the market, what the average market is for this particular classification. What I think we also need to consider is that our goal at hiring, when we look at classifications and our low to mid-wage earners, our goal should be for people not to stay where they start. Our goal should be to, be looking how we can provide pipelines and bridges for them to excel and not stay in that same entry-level position for twenty years. But where they can, we can provide a pathway to them for leadership, which gets back to what Councilman, Councilwoman Porter referenced about the, the, the professional development and training opportunities that we make available to all of our employees, not just our executive employees.
Well, Director, I had a bill that Mayor Scott passed so we can make sure that people in these positions get an opportunity to move up. So that's already there. My question is, you saying you can compete with other, other jurisdictions or CDL competitors? But then when you get to the second step, we back at the beginning again. Because now we're going to have the same thing which you repeated, which the Council Porter talked about. We're going to be back there again. Because after the second step, you gave them a ten thousand dollar bonus. Yeah, that's great. They did their second step. Guess what? You're going to have some more openings. That's awful. Councilwoman Vice President.
Okay. First of all, I just, Director Herbert, I just want to thank you for, um, being supportive and involved in the HR workshops and professional development coursework for, from the Maryland Association of Counties. As a executive board member, we also work with, uh, HR folks around the state. And, uh, you have been a participant in learning from other, um, counties as well as sharing what you do. And, uh, having that representation there from Baltimore City is just extremely important. So thank you for, um, uh, being a representative for our city on, on that end. So my one question, um, you know, as far as with the state, we're getting ready to have that bill pass for, you know, marijuana. And I guess, could you kind of give us an update on where we are with testing? And I know that's. And I know that's, it's going to be some changes there, and it, just that round of update would be helpful.
Sure. Um, as you know, a couple of years ago, we removed the requirement for pre-employment, uh, drug testing for non-safety sensitive classifications. I think that as we look to our partners in DC who have been, uh, wrestling with the issues related to recreational marijuana use for a few years now.
Excuse me, um, we can't hear you. I just got a text. So can you just move the mic a little? Thank you.
Okay. Um, our partners in DC have been grappling with some of the issues related to recrea- recreational marijuana usage for a number of years now. I think that what we do is we, we look to them, and our policy now only requires pre-employment drug screening and random, uh, drug screening for those who are in safety sensitive classifications, which is a best practice, even in jurisdictions where there exists recreational marijuana usage. And the reason for that is, number one is safety. That folks who are in safety sensitive classifications either operate equipment or their job is inherently dangerous. And so you want to ensure the, both the employee's safety and the safety of the public. And so as we look at our policy, we'll always look, will look to ways that we can update our policies to reflect best practices, which the, the changes that we made two years ago reflect the best practices. And if you look at our policy compared to the District of Columbia, it's very close, uh, in, in terms of, of the policy. District of Columbia says that basically, even though recreational marijuana usage is legal, if you are applying for one of these types of jobs and you test positive, you will be disqualified. And that's pretty much what our policy says as well.
Thank you for that update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And, um, Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for joining us, Director Herbert.
I'm sorry, real quick, um, Councilman, I just want to recognize Councilman Cohen.
Um, so I'll just triple down on, uh, entry level positions and middle management positions. Can you speak to, I have a couple of questions that sort of get at it, but I'll try and consolidate them for the sake of time. But essentially, like, what do we, are, is there a salary study being done? And maybe you answered this earlier, and my apologies if you did, across agencies, including the city council offices? And this is something that we discussed, uh, with the city administrator. Um, it, you know, unlike, or, or alike, similar to, similarly to other agencies, we also struggle to retain talent, um, when, you know, with the level of pay that our staff receives, um, who, you know, folks work incredibly long hours, do very complex jobs, um, and are, you know, sort of capped at where, where their salaries can be, given the classifications that they have. And it makes it very difficult for us to retain, um, staff within our offices who frankly, working in policy, um, can afford you many other opportunities to make a lot more money. Um, and so we do see either folks leave and go to other agencies within city government. Uh, and we lose a lot of folks who, and I mean, I personally lost staff to other agencies. Um, and I know others have as well, because we just can't compete even within city government. And so are, are the council offices included in this analysis that you're looking at across agencies? Um, because it, it's something that's critical to our work. And, you know, we want our staff to feel as valued as any other agency in city government when it comes to their pay and the competitiveness compared to other jurisdictions. And there was noted that in Montgomery County and other jurisdictions nearby, council staff do make significantly more than we do frankly as council members. And I would argue in many ways, the jobs are not as taxing or emotionally draining as it is working in Baltimore City, uh, where, you know, we have levels of violence that are not, you know, at the same levels across the board and, and just a lot of, you know, really hard things that we all deal with and try to navigate. Can you respond to that? Just generally where we are citywide, but also lifting up the council work?
Sure. To the extent that the, because the classifications that exist in the council are classifications that exist across the city, they are included in this massive study that our, our vendor is working on that should be completed again by the end of the summer. It is also my understanding that, uh, the administration has been working with those in the council president's office around a study that specifically looks at the council's office. And that, that there is to be follow-up, I believe, in July with respect to those discussions. But what I can tell you is that with respect to the studies that, uh, the study that DHR is facilitating, that to the extent that there exists, and I, and I believe that there are those generic classifications within the council office that exist throughout the city, those will be studied and looked at.
And I, and I missed just the, the deadline and sort of next steps, um, for that?
It, it, the study right now is ongoing. We, we've retained a vendor. They are collecting data from other surrounding jurisdictions now, and they have not yet begun the analysis portion of that data. Uh, we have weekly phone calls with them to see where they are in the process. And again, the, the estimated completion date should be by the end of summer, so mid, mid to late August. We will socialize it with the administration shortly thereafter, and then we will discuss how we, how we roll that out. Uh, again, it gets back to what I, what I alluded to earlier. It's very, it's a very sensitive area for us because it's one thing to complete the study, it's another thing to implement the study. And we don't, what we don't want to do is to give our employees a, 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 uh, a false sense of, 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 uh, what's coming because those are all tied to the city's budgetary constraints. And so what we try to do is we, we roll out and announce those results when we can implement them so as to not create further disengagement amongst our employees.
Yeah, I think it'd just be, be helpful, at least sharing that with the council for whatever ways that you can do that, um, so that we, you know, now that we do have a, a lot more authority over the budgetary process, I think it's, it's important that we are briefed as well. Now that we do, we're not just budget cutters, but we reallocate. And if there's constraints that are impacting the ability to implement that, we should be a part of those conversations too. It shouldn't just be left with the administration to decide if they want to do that on the front end. But our ability to be a part of that conversation and work with the administration to, to do this, I think is important. The other two quick, two quick questions, Mr. Chair. Was the, um, there were two, two announcements made, one by the former city administrator around telework. But we haven't really gotten an update on, on that and where that stands. Can you give, give us an update on the current teleworking policy? If there's been changes that have been made since the, the previous announcement? And so we can have, sort of have a better, better understanding? And I guess as a part B to that is, um, the issue has come up a few times very recently about folks working multiple jobs while teleworking and sort of how has that, um, been a part of these, this sort of discussion around teleworking generally in Baltimore? So it's clear to everybody what the policy is, what other, what the work requirements are, and, you know, any potential conflicts that may arise?
Sure. Thank you for the question. First, let me begin by saying that, uh, we are working on updates to our telework policy. We did conduct a future of work pilot program where that final report is in its final review phases and will be, should be released shortly. What we discovered is a couple of things. One, we discovered that, uh, telework by and large generally was successful in Baltimore City. We found that, uh, in many instances, productivity increased. And I, I'll give a couple of examples there. That we looked at, uh, 311, for example. Pre-COVID, 311 had a number, and the Labor Commissioner will attest to this. There were a number of, a litany of labor relations issues in the office. Grievances, callouts, sick outs, the like. Staffing, you know, challenges with staffing folks, putting butts in seats, for lack of a better word. But with the advent of telework as we transitioned due to COVID, we saw virtually no callouts, no sick outs. Productivity increased. Their metrics with respect to call taking and responses to SRs increased. So we saw productivity by and large increase with 311 simply by taking them out of a city structure and allowing them to work remotely. We also saw this with, in an office, in my own office, in the office of EAP. EAP got real creative around how we saw patients and when we saw patients because of the ability to, to, to use a, a telemedicine type format, a virtual format. And so the hours for EAP were able to extend from beyond the traditional 8:30 to 4:30 hours to 6:00 PM, when folks can now come after hours and have their virtual appointment. One of the other things that, anecdotally, we heard from, uh, folks that would come to EAP is that it was cumbersome for them to come in, to find parking downtown, and then they had to pay for parking. It was, it was costly. It was, it wasn't worth the trip for them. Well, we've seen the numbers for EAP and those who request EAP services increase because of the readiness with which a person can log on to a computer and schedule an appointment and have an appointment with an EAP, with a social worker from EAP. So those are two real tangible examples where we have seen productivity and service use, in the case of EAP, increase with the advent of telework. There's been a lot to, to do about one or two incidents where you have a bad actor who does something while they are working remotely. That has not been the, the general experience of our workforce. Most of our employ, you know, our employees, they, if they're working from 8:30 to 4:30 and they're working remotely, they're working remotely. Anecdotally, uh, I am, I, I can speak to an incident where we had a person who worked in one of the operational agencies who was coming in. They, they were, uh, out in the field. And they had another job while they were out in the field. And they were, they were doing both jobs at the same time. I, I think that, that speaks to a person's character and not where you tell them to report to work. And so I, I, I think that as we looked at the pilot program and we looked at things like office hoteling and other things, we saw that, uh, our city workforce is quite resilient and that was very productive while working remotely. So, uh, the, the updates to the policy, uh, Councilman, to answer your question about the policy, we'll just reiterate and spell out clearly and plainly that, uh, you, you can't do other work for anyone else while you're working for the city remotely, which it's, it's kind of counter, it's kind of intuitive that one would, would, would know that or should know that, right? But we will spell that out in the, in the policy amendments to the policy. And also to do away with some of the requirements that were required early with the advent of remote work and telework, where you had to photograph the, uh, workspace that you were using. We've worked with our partners in the Office of Risk Management. That language is antiquated and is no longer necessary, so we will be taking that out. And again, with the advent of Workday and our ability to, to, to use and leverage our cloud-based system, it makes it easier for employees to put in what they're working on, for managers to tell employees, this is what my expectations are of you while you're working remotely and what you need to complete, and for, for us to be able to have a check and balance on that.
Okay. Uh, that's good to know. And for the record, I'm, I'm pro telework, so. Uh, just, just making sure we have a more formalized, uh, policy. Quick, last quick one. Um, the administration noted removing degree requirements. Can you just speak to, for, for many jobs, can you speak to what type of jobs those are and, uh, where we are with that?
Sure. Our Office of Classification and Compensation is partnering with our agencies. With respect to the class specs, we work with the agencies to develop the minimum qualifications. So what we are doing right now is working with those agencies as they, we're looking first at our hard-to-fill positions, and we're starting there and working with agencies to say, do you really need a person with a master's degree here? Is this really a position where you need 10 years of experience? Could a person with five years of experience do this job? And we're really taking a good, long look at, are we creating, uh, a hard-to-fill position by having minimum qualifications that lock out a lot of people that otherwise could do the job, right? And from the, from the hard-to-fill positions, we're moving towards when agencies are requesting reclassifications or other things, we're looking at the position as a whole and saying, okay, this requires this level of education, this level of experience. Is this what you really need? And so for, I'll give you an example. The chemist position was one where, no, the, the agency pushed back. This person needs to have a degree in chemistry, right? This person is testing, uh, water, and they, they need to have a degree in chemistry, right? Whereas we have a generic, uh, uh, office, uh, office, uh, executive director one position. Does this person need to have a degree? It may be that for, uh, one agency that is hiring for a deputy director, it may not need a degree. For another, they may. So we, we are looking and working with agencies to see how we can best make sure that the job announcement and the class specifications mirror to what they need and not to what is a generic canned, uh, approach to a class spec.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all I have for this round.
I have a question. Um, you said, who pays for the study that you used, that you talked about? In terms of, in your office, you were talking about a study that you can't implement. Who pays for the study?
When you say who pays for the study, do you mean the actual study itself or the implementation?
The implementation study, whatever you were talking about, the study. Who, who pays for that? And my second question is, why would we pay for a study that we not even gonna implement? You do a study, whoever you pay for the study. And then when we get the study done, we say we can't implement it because of reasons. And, and to me, why would we even do it? This is almost like wasting money for a study that we can't even move on. So my question is, who pays for the study?
I'll defer to, uh, my partner, BB Mar.
Yeah, um, that's a, that's a great question, Councilman. So, um, the, the cost of the study itself, uh, with the vendor that we bring on board to do the work, that's part of a, a citywide expense that's paid out of the general fund. In terms of implementing the results of the study, once we have that analysis, uh, then we're, you know, that ultimately gets factored into the city's budget based off of the, um, the salaries that we reflect in agency budgets for personnel costs. In terms of the, the work that Director Herbert is talking about and, um, looking at how we can implement it, I think, um, having the study is going to be a really important data point in giving us a map of where we're trying to go and to be really strategic and targeted in terms of making sure that we're syncing up our salaries and, and doing everything we can to sort of be as competitive as we need to be. Once we see the results of the study, it, it's my hope that we can be creative to identify solutions that we can implement as many of the recommendations as possible. Now, will that have to be prioritized in a way that we do it in chunks? Maybe, depending upon our overall financial situation. But I'm also really interested in seeing the final results of the study because I do think that this transition that the director was describing, where we go to these salary schedules with a lot of steps, I think that there's a way that we can do that in a way that we can afford it and that we can sort of make a meaningful impact for employees quickly. It also, um, sort of takes, I mean, obviously, we will still do COLAs, but it kind of takes some of the pressure off of our COLAs, knowing that people will get meaningful step increases on a routine basis. So again, I, you know, I'm not completely pessimistic that we're gonna get this study and it's gonna have a price tag that we can't afford because I do think that there's going to be a couple of creative options that we can explore to make sure that we make progress in this area.
So this is a request. How, can you give, how much is the study? Can I get that request out of the budget? Two is, if you're not gonna implement it, how long, my question is, how long did it take to do the study? How long did the study take?
They vary in length based on the number of classifications that are being studied. This particular study is looking at over 150 classifications. It started approximately eight weeks ago, and it's going to go into the summer and should be completed by the end of the summer.
So different classifications depends on how long the study is?
What was that, sir?
Different classification de- depends on, tell you how long the study, that study gonna be?
No, what I said was the number of classifications.
What a number of classifications.
How many, how many positions that the vendor has to look at. Because for each position, what the vendor does is they reach out to a number of other jurisdictions. Local jurisdictions, there are jurisdictions that are economically similar to Baltimore. And then there are jurisdictions that are called, uh, Amtrak cities or the Northeast Region cities. So DC, Baltimore, Philadelphia, New York. They look at those.
And Boston.
And Boston. And they look at those, they look at the light classification. And they look at the light classifications from those cities. What they do is they take our class specs for those positions, and they talk to those agencies, and they say, we need your classes that do this work. There always is not an apples-to-apples comparison. A person in one jurisdiction may do some of what the folks here do in a classification, and another classification may do the rest of that work. So then there's a process by which the vendor looks at, we want to get as close to apples-to-apples comparison as we can based on the scope of work from all of these jurisdictions, and then we compare them to Baltimore City.
So my question is then, once the study is done, how fast do you implement it or do you implement it? Do you got to wait? Because you're saying you do the study, but you just can't implement it right away because of some reason. So if you already did a study, how long did it take before you implement it and do it actually? I guess a question is, once you do the study, when it's implemented, what part of it is done? Because I'm sure you said some parts you can't do, some parts you can. I just understand why we're spending money on a study, and then we say we can't do nothing with it, almost like. It's just sit there until it's time for us to do it. I just don't understand why we're wasting money to budget on something like that. Madam CEO?
Sure. Thank you for that question. So I think as the Budget Director alluded to, we need to understand where we are in comparison to other cities when it comes to our workforce and being competitive. And so when we are able to implement aspects of the study within the, you know, if we have a really good budget year, then we will implement aspects of the study. But we have to have those studies done to really understand what the costs are. I'll give another example. We have over about a $2 billion backlog in deferred maintenance when it comes to our facilities and our fleet. Even though we don't have $2 billion to really pay for and tackle and solve that deferred maintenance backlog in one year or two years, I still need to understand what the totality of the backlog is, right? And I think I mentioned earlier this week when I testified at my hearing that we are going to embark on our 10-year financial plan. And so understanding what our employees' costs, what the cost for our employees are or should be over the next 10 years will really help us build in over time and really phase in some of the work that we've been doing through these salary studies.
Okay. So my next question, real quick, is for Labor Commission. I'm glad you're here, Madam CEO. We talked about the city employees that drive city trucks with no air conditioning. That's horrible. My other question was, I even mentioned about when they go into the facility, they get into those trucks and pick up the trash. When they go back to that facility and get back in their car, they can't even take a shower. So are we looking at that from when you're in, but from the administration to make sure we start that conversation and make sure that our city employees? Because, I mean, you're a city employee. You go pick up trash. Nobody else want to do it. But they go back and get in their car, take their germs home with them, germs in their car, but they can't even take a decent shower. That is no morale for city employees. So my question is, are we pushing it out to make sure we build those facilities for our employees so when they want to come back to their site, they can take a shower and be clean and don't transfer that germs to their families?
Yep. So I've heard, I've gotten that same feedback when I've gone out to some of the maintenance yards across the city. And that's one of the first things that I actually hear from our employees is some of the challenges around our facilities. And I think yesterday, when the DPW Director was here, he testified about some of the facilities improvements that we are going to be funding. And in addition to what we already have in our CIP and in the budget, we also did add additional ARPA money that will be going towards upgrading some of our facilities and providing showers and just better restroom facilities, as well as ensuring that we are addressing any health and safety issues in our facilities is top of mind for the funding that we have to upgrade our facilities.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. Real quick, I know I didn't talk a lot, but we got a 2 o'clock, so...
You're the one taking all the time, man.
I said I talked a lot, but I'm good. But, you know, you asked a lot of questions, too.
Oh, I get it. I understand. I'm calling on you right now. All right. So I have a couple of questions. One is, I'm concerned that it's taking too long when, first of all, to post a job, we'll just use the INREM positions as an example, to post a job. So we get the positions approved, and then for some reason, it took till November to post the job. I'm not sure of all the dates, but just bear with me. And then they didn't start interviewing until March, when we had gotten those positions approved in July. So, and it's not just the INREM, it's the, you know, the Park Rangers or whatever they're calling them. It's, you know, it's just taking too long for HR to get its processes together to be able to get us these positions filled immediately. And that is a problem because now we have to, I guess, Budget Director, we carry over that money for those positions, even if they aren't hired? Because, you know, this is the end of the fiscal year, and I realize we've made offers and people didn't take it, but like, there's, it's just a, I don't understand why it's taking so long? And what are the ways that you are working to like, make sure that everything is much tighter so that it's not taking forever to get these positions posted and hired? Because a year of getting position approved to hiring is totally unacceptable.
Thank you for the question, Madam Councilwoman. And let me just begin with the process. Those positions were new positions, which means they needed to be created through the ECC process. That ECC process, the ECC or the Expenditure Control Committee, meets once a month with the Comptroller's Office, BBMR, DHR, and the Office of the Labor Commissioner. Once those items are created through the ECC process, they must be approved, still be approved by the Board of Estimates, which they go the following, now that the board meets biweekly, it takes about two weeks from the approval by the ECC for those positions to get to the Board of Estimates. With respect to these positions, once we receive the requisition in late or early December, the requisition for the Assistant Counsel was opened on December 28th of last year. We had three candidates that were referred in December, four in January, one in February, five in March, eight in April. And it's my understanding that ultimately, offers were made to four individuals. Only one accepted. And it's further my understanding that the agency is currently scheduling interviews. They're doing a second pass and scheduling interviews as we speak. So I think that to say that the delay, that there's an HR delay, we were sourcing candidates within a number of weeks. So I think that there's, the process is, DHR is responsible for providing eligible candidates to agencies. We don't schedule interviews. We don't do the interviews. We don't hire the individuals. What I will say is that one of the things that we did to ensure that we are consistently sourcing talent for HCD for these critically important positions is that this is on what's called an open and continuous list, an open and continuous requisition, which means that it's an evergreen posting, that it doesn't come down, that it doesn't stay up for just the five days or the 14 days, that it stays up until those positions are filled. It's open and continuous. So we have been sourcing talent to HCD since December of last year. They have been scheduling interviews and interviewing candidates, and they run into some difficulty in identifying candidates who they want to come to the city and who want to come and fill those positions.
Well, so two things there. One is, I thought, and the Budget Director can correct me if I'm wrong, I thought that when positions are in the budget, when they're new positions, they're approved. So we shouldn't have had to wait till December.
It depends on how the position is reflected in the budget. In some cases, if an agency, if it's pretty straightforward and the agency knows what classification they're trying to create, then the classification itself will get created in the budget, and they're able to bypass that step that Director Herbert was describing. But in some cases, in many cases, if the agency isn't quite sure what classification it's going to fall under, they might use a couple of other tactics to put funding in the budget. And under those scenarios, they do have to go through the ECC process. I'm not 100% certain on this particular example. I'd have to look at our 23 adopted data. I think in this case, those dollars were budgeted as a pending personnel action, which meant that we had to go through the ECC process to create the position number and the classification so that recruitment could begin.
Yeah. Because it was a, what do you call it, an enhancement request? So it might have been put in kind of at the last minute, which is why that was the case.
Yep. And what we, going into this year's process, we really tried to work closely with agencies. Again, where it was very straightforward and we knew what the classifications would be, we tried to reflect those in the budget. I think this is an area where we, as we go into fiscal '25 and beyond, this is a place where HR and BBMR will be sort of leaning into our partnership to make sure that we streamline this in the budget planning process because we share the same goal as the agencies. You know, we share the goal that we want to have these positions ready to go as close to July 1st as possible. And whatever we can do in terms of our process to help facilitate that, we want to make sure we're doing.
So it was my understanding, one of the candidates that I know I recruited for that and had them apply, they applied through the portal and then didn't hear back for five months. So I don't actually know how that happens. I mean, at least people should be getting, you know, something back to say, yep, we've acknowledged or whatever. I mean, by that time, the person had already taken another job. So there's got to be something that we've got to figure that out. And maybe one day, we can go through, like, you can literally walk me through because we don't have to take the time today, like, how that, you know, works. But, you know, the other piece of it is just sort of the, I know you, DHR does the initial vetting, too. So, you know, just making sure that once you vet and then send candidates over, that they're who we're looking for. I know that that was something with code enforcement, that they had some issues with some of the folks that DHR was sending to them. So just kind of thinking through, how can we make these, how can we get this done so we can get these folks hired?
Is that a request, Councilwoman?
This is so critical. Yeah. So my second question was about...
What is the request? We're going to have to wrap this up because Councilman Z. Cohen and Councilman Burnett have a question, and I want to recognize Councilwoman McCray and Councilman Glover.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My second question is, we had discussed the opportunity to try to hire more non-English speakers. And one of the things that's, this might be fixed by now. I haven't checked it. But on the portal where it says, you know, what languages do you speak? And then somebody hits a selection, and Spanish isn't even in there. You have to write it in. I don't know if that's been fixed yet. But I just, that's just an example of trying to make it, you know, easier for people who are multilingual. We must hire more Spanish speakers, period, end of story. And so we're trying to just make sure that it's easy for them to do that.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. And that very issue that you described is an issue that we flagged for our change management team to fix in the system. And I would love the opportunity to work with you to actually go through an application process so that you could see, start to finish, how that system works. And if you could offline, share with me the name of the person that you had to apply, and we can go back in and see what was sent to that person through the system.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. We'll have more conversation. Thank you.
Councilman Cohen, and then Councilman Burnett. And again, I want to recognize Councilman Dorsey also.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to Director and your team. To briefly reiterate, Councilman Stokes's point about the way we pay our lowest employees, lowest-paid employees, and also Councilman Burnett's point about city council staff, you know, simply put, we get the government that we pay for. And it is my contention that we are not paying enough to inspire the next generation of public servants for Baltimore. There's a crisis across the country where we see folks not wanting to go into government. I was in California, in San Jose. A fully, a third of their workforce, municipal workforce, quit from the start of the pandemic until about six months ago. We need to do more. And again, appreciate you all and the CAO committing to studying these issues. I hope that we can see action quickly. I want to ask briefly about mental health. We know that across the country, here in Baltimore, we are experiencing a profound mental health crisis. It has certainly impacted our workforce here in Baltimore. And so I know that we are training our library system and our recreation and parks in trauma-informed care. But I wanted to know from the DHR perspective, what are we doing to support the overall wellness and well-being of the people that work here?
Thank you for the question. I would refer, and again, go back to some of the work that I talked about earlier, where our Office of EAP or Employee Assistance Program, we have certified licensed clinical social workers on staff with our employees. Whenever there is a trauma event in the city, we dispatch those social workers to those work sites and locations to begin that dialogue with our employees. We could probably pull data on how many cases, active cases, our EAP office has right now. It increased during the pandemic. And what we did to address that, again, is we extended office hours to beyond the traditional 8:30 to 4:30. We got creative. It offered services up to 6:00 PM. We are committed to a human-centric approach to how we treat our employees, which treats the holistic person, not just from a trauma perspective, but everything from how we compensate our employees to, one of the other major drivers of employee engagement is employee democratization and employee voice and how we give voice to our employees.
No, I appreciate that. And just would close out by saying, you know, it's not just about the traumatic events. We, and I genuinely, I know at EAP, I appreciate EAP, but what I've seen and what I think we've seen in a lot of places throughout the country is that folks are really suffering. They're often not volunteering, sticking their hand up and saying, I want to go talk to a social worker or a clinician. And so I think that we just need to do more to support proactively the mental health of our employees, particularly those like our first responders, our fire department, our police department, our frontline sanitation workers who are in the thick of it and because of the culture of stigma, may not ask for help. So I would just ask that we continue as a city to be innovative and proactive in addressing the mental health crisis that so many Americans are experiencing. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Thank you to the Labor Commission, Human Resources. We're going to move into our next agenda, and it will be Department of Transportation. That's recess. Yes, we're going to start now.